We called the regular January Board of Trustees meeting to order and asked everyone to stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the January meeting of the Board of Trustees. They'll ask for the roll call.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Bryden Ball.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Flinger.
Here.
Trustee Addicks.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Present.
Okay. Need approval of the agenda, including the amendment.
Hold on.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a motion for approval of the December 11th Board of Trustees meeting.
Don't move.
Chairman, I have a correction. I was hoping somebody would. Page two, number five. Yes. So Chairman Ash. Be sure you enunciate. Yeah, Chairman Ash. Yes, it doesn't. I wasn't here, was I? I've been trustee now. Because it should be you, right. Also, I would like to note in number one in the roll call, it doesn't indicate that J.D. was here, but I saw elsewhere in the minutes where J.D. made motions and so forth, so I'm presuming J.D. was here.
I was.
Okay. So we have correction number one, correction number five. Anything else?
Move approval of the amendment.
Second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the December 17th special meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Don't move.
Second.
All right. Got a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Item five on the agenda is audience to patrons and petitioners. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the board today? Okay. Ms. Bowman, if you would, if you would, please step to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, even though I know it.
My name's Paul Bowman. I live at 3815 North 99th in Kansas City, Kansas. Retired Kansas City, Kansas policeman and just now retired from the Community College Police Department. I don't know if the board members are not aware of or just don't care about the grave, what I consider a grave injustice to the campus police department. Recently, members of the college, as an example, Coach Sloan, got a $600 bonus for added duties and responsibilities because he assumed the coaching position for 21 days. The print shop and duplicating were joined together. They were allowed to hire another person and they all got $3,000 a year raises for added duties and responsibilities. David Rupp recently got a $6,000 a year raise retroactive to July of 2011 for added duties and responsibilities because he's managing the dorms. Campus police has control of all the keys and all the locks on the main campus and all five satellite buildings. They get nothing for that. They now have to fingerprint 150 nurses every semester. They get nothing extra for that. They have to monitor $2 million worth of surveillance equipment, cameras in the hallways, electronic doors, and the fire alarm system. They get nothing for that. They have to patrol not only the campus, but five satellite buildings, plus a building being remodeled by tech, and the dorms. We get nothing for that. Since they have taken over the dorms, the workload, as far as reports, has more than doubled. Consequently, the secretary has twice as many reports to categorize and file. She has extra parking tickets that she has to issue stickers for the dorm and keep track of that. She has to issue pass cards to get through the gates over there. She gets nothing extra for that. The chief is the only chief in the area that does not have a take-home car, yet he is expected to respond to any major occurrences here at the college, night or day. He's responsible for the security of the main campus, all five satellite buildings, the three dorm buildings, and the safety of the staff, faculty, and students at all these locations. And yet he makes about $25,000 a year less than the lowest-paid dean up here, who has the most responsibility. We have a hard time getting and keeping good, qualified police officers up here because they come to work up here, they go to the academy, get certified, work here for maybe a year, and then they can go to any of the smaller agencies around here and make more money than they make here. I pointed this out to a staff member at one time and told him that until they got the pay comparable to these agencies, we'd always have a hard time getting people. Their response to me was, "You're not deserving of pay comparable to them because you don't face the dangers on a daily basis like they do. Anytime you put your uniform on and go to work, you're facing danger." And it just, to sum it up, I know my time is short, but to sum it up, I kind of felt like a evil stepchild. You had me, but you really didn't want me here. And that's kind of the way they feel because everybody gets raises, increases for added duties and responsibilities, but not campus police. They're a necessary evil, and that's the way I felt about it. Thank you for your time.
All right, Paul. Thank you very much. Appreciate your willingness to come and share with us, and we appreciate your service here. Thank you. Yes? Please.
Hi. My name is Deborah Michelle, and I have come here today, I don't know how you define the hat. So I was a student, I was an intern, I'm a contracted person, I'm a citizen, I'm a DOT, maybe I'm not a DOT. However, I mean, I'm not really from here. I'm from Missouri a long time ago, so however you want to label me, I'm still Deborah Michelle, and I'm still right here. So I came here to bless this committee today because vengeance is not mine, vengeance is only the Lord's, right? So I'm going to pray something over you today for Hebrews 12:14 through 15, which is a lot of the inner battle in this school. So I just want to let you know that I care deeply about each and every one of you, that none of you is more important or valued than the next, and that Jesus loves us all. So that's my spiel to you today. So thank you for your time.
All right, Deborah. Thank you. We appreciate you coming forward and thank you for the blessing. Okay. Other, yes? Absolutely.
Hi. I'm Jan, I'm short. I will be short, but I am short. Janice McIntyre, 620 Cleveland, KCK, 66109. And I would like to update the board on AAUW activities over the fall semester and what we're looking forward to for the spring semester. Of course, I would have an informational packet. We are very excited about AAUW. We are going places. We are doing things. We're doing so much that one page can hardly contain it all. First, I would like to go ahead and read what the national mission is. AAUW advances equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, philanthropy, and research. We are part of a national group, and I happen to have our national latest magazine here. One of the interesting things I did last fall was to write a grant. We will be having student programs in March and in April. The March program will be about pay equity, and in April it will be about the student debt crisis and help to get students information and help them manipulate through student debt. One of the things that AAUW does consistently is work with other organizations. They do a lot of collaboration on this, so we had many groups helping us for things like the Get Out the Vote project that we did in October. We also have had a lot of support through the Intercultural Center. We're now branching out into different areas of the curriculum to help us with these two programs that we have coming up. Our group originally started, and I believe we have about 40 students right now, and we have about 30 to 35 community women or faculty women on board so far. We have a two-level group that works together. We have students, we have the faculty community, and we work together on these different projects. The community women and faculty women are actually currently part of the Kansas City, Missouri branch of AAUW, but we will be here within the short six- to nine-month future be declaring ourselves our own KCKCC group. But I would like to thank the KC Mo Group for sponsoring us and for giving us support. We have the projects listed for you from this last year. We have the 2013 projects listed, and our future projects, I think, hold the most promise. The KC Mo Group has had the 100 High School Girls Project for, I believe, about 75 years. I was chair of that for the last two years, and I'm chair of it for this year. That's where they have counselors who recommend the top women students in high schools. They write essays. The essays are read blindly, an old English teacher trick. That doesn't mean you close your eyes, you just take away all the names. And we give scholarships. We have a big celebration in Kansas City, Missouri in April where these are awarded. Every student who participated receives a, I don't know, an award thing that they can put on their resume, and it's a nice way to honor high school students who are coming to college. And AAUW also does a lot of higher ed recruitment. So that's what we would like to transport to Wyandotte County here in a few years so that we can start our own 100-girls clubs where we actually go out and do the scholarships and we get students engaged and enrolled at the high school level. We also have tutoring in the long-term future, and we would like to work with STEM, and that is a program that develops women in science, technology, engineering, and math skills. And we will also be keeping our eyes open for future grants that can help enrich campus as a whole, as well as fortify our female students with additional options for learning that may not be in formal classes. An example of what we're doing on the 24th here in a couple of weeks, we're taking a van full of students over to the UMKC library and the UMKC Women's Center where they will see the movie Misrepresentation. It talks about females and how they are viewed in the news broadcasting profession. On the second, we also have another van. I'm so glad I can get the KCKCC van, and by the way, I am certified to drive that van. I did take the test over at maintenance and do all those things. We're taking another group over to the Kaufman Center, and this is going to be our first fundraiser with the community and faculty women. So I'm going to stop there. Do you all have any questions or concerns with what we're doing or what we're up to?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does your group have any focus on women in non-traditional jobs?
You bet. You bet. And actually, that's what the STEM, they have a whole STEM program, science, technology, engineering, and math. And actually, a lot of the AAUW women are very active from that KC Mo Group in the, what is it they do over at the Union Station, at the Science Fair, and then there's the STEM Science Fair. And a lot of my cohorts over in KC Mo are actually the judges. And the co-chair with me on the 100 girls for this spring is an engineer, and she keeps saying, "We've got to get some more women in engineering," and that's one of her major goals, and she's very active in that. So I was an English major, so science is, you know, still an exciting challenge along with math, but we do recognize the importance of that and that women are encouraged throughout the curriculum.
I would love to, if you haven't already met, Elise Martini. She would be a wonderful motivational speaker. She is the first woman to lead women in construction.
Oh, wow. Okay.
And she's just dynamic, and she does a lot in Kansas City, Kansas, as well as Kansas City, Missouri, and certainly women in non-traditional roles is her forte. So I'd love for you to meet her. She's a delight.
And it's an exciting time. You know, years ago when I was a freshman at UMKC, I had an English instructor who said, "You know, you should really be an English major." And I said, "Well, I don't think so." She said, "Go down to the Career Center and take one of those little tests." And I did, and at that time, when was, do I dare say, what year that was, '67? Women could only be 24 different things. I mean, that's all that cranked out for women, and of course, housewife, and nurse, and teacher, and secretary were there. But I do think that now we have an understanding of women across the career fields and know the importance of getting that together, or at least doing our part here at KCKCC. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so very much, and I do want to say thank you so very much for your support. We do appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much, Janice. All right. Item seven, the president's report.
Thank you there. I put it here places, the information about the, some of the events that will be going on in the next few days related to Martin Luther King events in KCK. We had the first meeting of the Joint Work Group of the KCKCC Board of Trustees and the KCKCC Endowment Board on January the 8th, and Dr. Daniels and Mrs. Braden, all of the KCKCC trustees that are serving with that work group. The two of them will probably come in on that meeting today, but I just wanted to let you know that they did meet. We're fast approaching all of the Martin Luther King events that are going on in the metro area. The annual Black Achievers Dinner will be on Thursday, January the 17th, at the Downtown Marietta in KC Mo. I will be attending that event. On Saturday, January the 19th, I'll be the guest speaker at the SCLC Scholarship Prayer Breakfast held at the College Basketball Experience at 10:00 a.m. I think it's in the Sprint Center. On Monday, January 21st, the 28th anniversary of the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. National Holiday Celebration will be at the Jack Reardon Center at 11:00 a.m. There are events preceding that, a March, I think, but I handed that, I handed out a copy, and I think those events are listed on there, all of them are on there. And on Thursday, February 14th, KACC will host the annual Phi Theta Kappa Capitol Visit and the Award Luncheon. The other thing is on the 5th, the board will have their retreat. It's at 5:00 p.m., and it'll be held here at the college in the old boardroom. And I think that's the extent.
Okay. Are there comments or questions for Dr. Gibbons? With respect to her comment about the KACC meeting on the 14th in Topeka for the PTK recognition and et cetera, Mary Ann and I will not be back from the AACT Legislative Summit in Washington, D.C. until later in the afternoon on that day. I have had a brief conversation with Dr. Daniels to see if he would like to attend that, to represent us, and I want to open that up to any of the other trustees that will be here that might be available on the 14th would like to go to Topeka with Dr. Gibbons and Stacy Tucker and Dr. Agachoffer and our students.
And I will be going, Doc.
Yes. Ray has cleared his calendar, so if you would like to go to that, see me after the meeting, talk to me, and then we'll be sure that, you need to be sure and get with Peggy, Dr. Gibbons, so that they can be sure to get you registered for it. So it's in Topeka. There's lots of activities you can participate in, but the luncheon and program is at noon. Okay. Thank you very much. Personnel.
Good morning.
Morning.
Last month, I presented you with drafts of revisions to the Early Retirement Plan and the Minority Contracting Procedures for the first reading, and I'm asking at this time if you are ready to adopt those two policies.
Move approval of the fully early retirement plan as revised.
Second. All right. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further comment or discussion regarding these policies? Hearing none, then we'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Under the personnel report, information 8A, 1 through 9, for your information.
Will you take action on the minority contracting?
Oh, yes.
I'll move approval of those proceedings.
Second. Does the attorney have any comment for us?
Ready for your action, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we're ready to move forward.
All right. Item 8A for your information, 1 through 9, and then requesting your approval for item 8B, 1 through 28.
I do have a question on items 24 and 25. Just want to know, how many, what is the advance notice required for your announcing your retirement?
There is not a requirement for a regular retirement. For early retirement, there is an advance notice requirement.
Is number 25 early or?
It's retirement. It is not early retirement.
So there is no requirement?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. Move approval of the recommendations.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Did you want to introduce at your time or?
I will do it now when I get to my table.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Agachoffer.
Yes, you have my report. Just to update you since I submitted it, we did go through the interviews for the project manager for the grant, and we checked on references, and we have now hired a young lady who's going to be the project manager. Her first day was yesterday, but I figured that I would give her time to get comfortable before I presented her to the board, and so I'm hoping by February to bring her in front of you.
Is that the T4E grant?
That's the T4E grant, yes. She needs to get familiar with it because I didn't want her to be grizzled with your questions until she knew what she was doing a little bit. But she's, we're very excited to have her on board and started yesterday, and so February I'm hoping to present her to you.
Could you give us just a little background?
Yes. She came to us from Kansas City, Missouri. She has worked on the Upward Bound Grant before the funding was cut for that. So she has, she was project manager for the grant. She has a lot of experience working with grants. She has not worked on a grant of this size, but she was, she impressed the committee with her questions and her passion for doing the right thing, and one of the things that struck us about her was the fact that she was very student-oriented and, you know, very passionate about helping students, and we felt that she's going to be a great fit and a great asset to the institution. Once she gets a little bit more comfortable with the grant, I will gradually transition her and introduce her to the FPO. I don't want to do that right now because the FPO only wants to have one person that is a point of contact. So I want her to be comfortable a little bit and then gradually transition her in, and I will then phase out. So that's the goal.
What is your name? Excellent.
And then I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you would explain the reasons for and the differences between Accupacer and Compass that we have decided to move on.
Okay. We, for the last couple of years, turns out that we are the only community college in Kansas that is still using the Accupacer. Other community colleges have shifted to Compass, and we have been thinking about we need to make that transition, but it is, you know, it's not an easy transition to make because we have to do the placement scores and everything else. But we really don't have any choice at this point because the Kansas Board of Regents wants to have the same placement test for all the two-year colleges. So we have been meeting myself, we formed a committee, Dr. McDowell, people from the Academic Resource Center, some of the faculty who have to determine placement scores. We are working on the placement scores. Once we get those placement scores identified, then I will present it to the board for board approval because it has to go through a board, and then hopefully we are going to begin transitioning to Compass this summer so that by fall semester, all incoming students will be tested through Compass.
So now what's the difference in the test requirements?
There are more restrictions on how you administer the test for Compass than you do for Accupacer. For example, Compass requires that you can't just have students lined up taking the test. They have to be set up in such a way that they cannot see the other students' computers through. So we're talking about maybe setting it up as pods or getting those dividers, things like that. Also, they're not allowed to have personal belongings anywhere when they take the test, so we either have to ask students to put their personal belongings in the locker. So the restrictions are much harder for Compass than for Accupacer. But it's the same, we've also, from my colleagues on the community college, the vice presidents, I've got the comparison scores, so I've given that to the faculty so that they can work on identifying placement scores themselves. Also, for some of the colleges, because of some of these restrictions, when they test for high school students, they go back and use the Accupacer, but we want to try and be consistent to use Compass. One of the other things that we might have to do is nowadays what can happen is students can walk into the Academic Resource Center and just test. We might have to start having times. We might have to start having times, specific times, and have them set up times so that they can come in and test because they won't just be able to walk in, depending on the availability. So there's certain restrictions, and that's what we're working on on the committee on ironing out those things.
I know it was under Vice President Bodie's report, but in the Enrollment Management Division, the reports that the AccuPlacer test sessions, there were none in December of '12 where there were thirty-eight in '11. Does this have anything to do with the transitioning?
No.
Or I was concerned that there was none given at the high school.
No.
So that didn't have anything to do with that?
No. The high school, they test early on because the high school is for two semesters, so they usually take the test actually now for next year. So that's why they do it.
Oh, January?
Yeah, yeah. Well, they take them this semester for the following August. So, but no, that had nothing to do with Compass.
Okay. Well, and I'll wait to grill Vice President Bodie when it's adjourned about that.
As long as I'm not the one being grilled. All right. Any other questions that you have on my report? I know it's a short report, but it was a short one.
I continue to read more about, concerned about how accurate and good these placement tests are, and I know you're following that too tomorrow.
Yeah.
And what are you hearing about that in the research? It just sounds like there are more and more questions about how good those things are predicting.
Yeah. One of, some of the things that we're looking at, and that we're doing this with Dr. Kelly in developmental education, and also Dr. Kelly, I'm hoping will be available in February to give you a brief update on what she's been doing. Sometimes students will take those AccuPlacer tests and all the placement tests, and they don't understand the significance of it. So the more that we can get them to test early, the more that we can talk to them and advise them and tell them this is going to have a bearing on the way you take your classes, what level you take them in. But all of that requires planning and it requires time.
Staffing.
Yeah, and staffing, and, but that's one of the things that we're working on with the developmental education.
Yes, that's fitting in with the developmental plan you have of doing more advising, more personal advising with students. That's great.
And also, if we can get them to do like boot camps early on, if they test, you know, to developmental, some of them might just need like a refresher, a one-week or two-week refresher. They test again, they might be able to test out of developmental.
For the high school students, are you having conversations with the area high schools around, maybe they could help with some advising or something as students are thinking about taking those tests or?
Well, we're trying to work as much as we can with the high schools, but there is, we can't actually coach the students in the high schools.
I understand, yeah. I would hope the high schools would be doing something to prepare students to take those tests too, if they know they're going to community colleges.
Our dual enrollment has gone up considerably. I mean, we have students now in high schools taking speech classes, taking biology, taking all sorts of classes, so that by the time they finish high school, they already have a lot of credits under their nose.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
I approve, move approval of the Vice President's report.
Excuse me.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Bodie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to start off this morning on my report by introducing Robert Robison. Robert is a new academic advisor, came to us, he got his feet wet fast. He came in the first week of January and got to take on the enrollment period right then, so I think he saw the best and the worst of enrollment and advising. We'd like to welcome him. Robert's from KCK and is a graduate of KCKCC. So, Robert.
Good, welcome. I did have a question for you. So I did say welcome first. If you step up to the. In the, in our recommendation approval, it did say that you were going to be developing an athletic advising process.
Yes, sir.
And so I wanted to know your tentative, we understand, tentative thoughts about what that process might entail.
Well, I, as a student here, I was a student athletic trainer in the athletic department where I have already established some relationships with a lot of the coaches there. I know that Sean has set some appointments for us to meet with the athletic director where we can establish some sort of advising criteria for the student athletics, student athletes to come in and get advising through the student advising center.
How would we be differentiating advising and student athlete from the typical student that comes through your department?
Well, we would, we would be able to sit down with them, work out a career, I'm sorry, work out a academic schedule as well as a degree, degree plan for the student athletes. That way, the coaches will not have the, have to set the student's schedule for them. That way, we can get them integrated into the student advising center.
So the ultimate goal is to increase the athlete's GPA and completion requirements?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. I appreciate you coming in early this morning with no notice also. Thank you. You have the rest of my report. As an update from when we filed these, they did get most of the sand and rubber mix into the baseball field infield. They are, we had a meeting yesterday, they are still on track for February 23, the first baseball game. There may not be any grass on that hill on the backside, but we're just worried about if we put grass down now, it'll more wash away than grow. But they are still, there's some fencing issues that we continue to deal with, but we're working on those, and so they're very confident that we will be able to play baseball on February 23. And I would ask you all if you would please put that on your long-term calendar, get your arm warmed up, start stretching, get ready.
Are you guaranteeing the weather that day on February 23 for baseball?
If I could guarantee the weather 10 minutes from now, I wouldn't have to work here. I'd be a wealthy, wealthy man. So no, we will.
It just sounds so early for baseball in Kansas, but I know where you start.
And there are, that's true. But that's the plan unless it's a really rotten day, and heck, we may get to try out, you know, the fact that one of the reasons you go to artificial turf is you can play when it's not very nice. And so, we may give that a shot. Also, that evening on the 23rd is the Hall of Fame induction for our Athletic Hall of Fame, and I would like to make sure you all kept that on your calendar between the ladies' and men's basketball game that evening.
What time is the game?
Which one?
Baseball game is at 1:00.
Baseball at 1:00.
Yeah.
And then the women's basketball game is at 6:00.
Yeah. So somewhere around 7:30-ish that evening in between the games for the Hall of Fame induction. Sir.
Okay, I did have a question on page four of your report. Campus police, it did say accepting applications for three full-time campus police officers. Just wanted to know if those were new or unfilled positions?
Two are the new position approved in the budget last year, and one is an unfilled position.
All right, thank you. And then under building and grounds, they talked about repairing the bleachers and then needing to have filler boards under bleacher seats for safety concerns. Have we gotten an estimate on refurbishing the bleachers in the fieldhouse?
No, I don't have a cost estimate. I can get one.
Okay. I think that would be worthy of us at least having. Then, could you give us more information in purchasing and risk management? Talked about the change from KASB on computating the workman's comp premiums. What exactly changes are they?
They are looking at active claims within each place will damage your premium computation more. I think the bottom line of all of it is we can look for a significant increase in our workman's compensation premiums, everybody across the state. It is a new federal formula of computation, so the larger claims that you have on will damage your usage to a greater extent than they do today. So, but I suspect the bottom line is, and we, there was four other community colleges this year who were dropped by their workman's comp insurers, private insurers, and so I think they all went and came to KASB, which is one of the last ones, because workman's compensation insurance is being affected similar to health insurance by new federal regulations that change the breadth and the depth of what the payments can be.
I do want to bring back my question. Page nine, Enrollment Management Division about the AccuPlacer test sessions and I think a major decline in the high school number, particularly there was zero, but from thirty-eight the previous year, is there any?
AccuPlacer tests are given at the request of either the high school and/or the individual students. I don't know if last year is the anomaly or this year is the anomaly. Denise, do you?
I do. Okay, here's the time. People are teaching, allowing them to high school students to enroll early. So, going out to school, Faith and Mary Kobe are spending a lot of time.
I think that number reflects a positive thing. We're being very intentional now about going out to the high schools early, getting our high school and concurrent students to enroll early. Mary Kobe, who is a concurrent coordinator in conjunction with Faith Moody, are going out early, and this also reflects the fact that it's December, and we shut down a little sooner, and their testing was done a little earlier. So I think that's a positive thing, and as we continue to go out, I think we'll see the numbers rise earlier, and as we get closer to enrollment, we should have fewer who are doing last-minute testing.
Okay, very good. While you're there, I did notice that you were needing to take on additional responsibilities.
Yeah, I heard there's compensation for that.
And I was, I was wondering how that, just explaining that and how that was going and how we are looking for the future?
I think right now it's going well. We, though it was unexpected, there was a great deal of pre-planning that was done. I know we've made a promise to the Allied Health that we would get their degrees posted by the 17th. I have completed three of the five, so I'm on track. And so I'm feeling very excited about that, and I have a big reward awaiting me. My family wants me to come home a little earlier, but we're on track, we're getting it done. And we have agreed to post the position. It is now advertised in addition to getting some supplemental assistance. So we're getting the job done.
That's what I was going to inquire next, is there is no opportunity for some sort of supplemental assistance in these? Because timing is actually kind of the critical issue to these.
And really, though I was struck, I think I called on Brian, I said, "Where are you? If ever I needed you, I need you right now on the 21st." I think I grabbed Dr. Gibbons. It was a shock, but when you consider the position, there's really no good time. If that person, I think the only thing the person could have done that would have allowed us to plan better was to have the notice. And at some point, I'd like to advocate for notice for those who retire, that we have at least 30 days' notice, because we could have done some better planning had we known. Short of that, you do what you gotta do. You know, some would say, "That's why I get paid the little bucks."
And then, one last while you're there, it was noted in financial aid that they are going to the high schools to train on financial aid and that, and then we were just talking about the Compass, and is there a way of tag teaming and trying to go to the high schools and train, I would imagine it's to be the counselors, you know, educating them on processes, procedures, that sort of thing, so that the high schools could?
If I can interrupt. With Compass, we have to administer the test. We can't give it to the high schools. That's why we're thinking that we need to maybe designate certain days, certain times for each high school to bring students in campus so that they can test. So that's one of the differences.
That's one, and they won't be able to do it there.
No, unless we go out there and, you know, plug it in ourselves, yeah, that's, we will be doing some of that, but I think probably we will try and get the high schools to set up a time to bring their students here on campus.
And that was one of the reasons why we were hesitant to get onboard and buy a ticket early. Compass doesn't allow us to be as mobile as AccuPlacer, where AccuPlacer has more of a web-based access. Compass, you have to load it on each computer that you're using. So if we were to go out to the high school, we'd have to load it on their computers for their students to use, then take it off when we exit it. And so it can be done, it's a lot more cumbersome, requires a lot more pre-planning and access to others' computer systems. But we are as far as doing that. The big push right now in going out to the high schools is in reference to the whole concept of financial literacy. And so that's what financial aid is wanting to work on, going out to the schools, helping the students understand about financial literacy, the impact of taking out student loans, the importance of pre-planning and looking for scholarships, and the amount of time you have for the Pell Grant now, those 12 semesters for a full-time Pell. So the world is changing as far as financial aid regulations and how parents used to go to school versus how their students will be going to school. And there is a lot of tag team and collaboration going on with the concurrent program, the financial aid program, and the admissions representatives as well.
Right.
So that collaboration is happening.
Thank you for the clarifications. Appreciate it.
Bodie?
Thank you.
On that review of high school football scoreboard advertisement proposal, what is that? I just want to know what you.
We got a offer from, Jim, which school?
Bonner Springs.
Bonner Springs High School. They have purchased a big new video capable, runs commercials, kind of like they have in college stadiums on their scoreboard, and they asked us if we wanted to look into running 15-second commercials between timeouts and while they review the plays and at halftime on their scoreboard in Bonner Springs. Since then, they have changed athletic director and/or superintendent, I don't know which one, and that entire project's on hold, but they offered us to be the local college that would be the advertiser on Bonner Springs High School's video advertisements at their football field.
Is it a cost?
Oh, yes, there's a cost. It would be part of our marketing and advertising budget, but right now that project's on hold.
Can we ask them also to advertise on our fence for the soccer?
I'm sorry?
Can we in return ask them to advertise on the fence?
Well, we could, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any more questions about my report? Yes, ma'am.
One question. Just curious, on page seven, under Media Services, what is a tri-caster switcher?
I'm sorry?
Tri-caster switcher.
Well, one of the issues that we have in trying to produce television for your program
and still produce television downstairs and in the interview programs that we run, is that, and to carry all the content that we need, and they've been on me and they want a hundred thousand dollar switch to make this better, part of it is, it is very hard on equipment of that type to pick it up out of the basement once a month, move it, stick it on a cart, run it up here to run a two-hour board trustee meeting, then unhook it, run it all back downstairs. That kind of equipment isn't truly mobile equipment. It gets beat up, it gets jammed, it gets bounced around, and it also isn't the quality that's probably needed to put on, especially as good of television and as good of video and as good a support inside of the campus as they would like to have. And so, yes, they are looking and they are being very, very, what would be the right term, they're thinking clear outside of the box to stretch this as far as they can stretch it as we look at competing demands for switches and routers and IT support.
So at some point in time, are we gonna have to go ahead and invest, make that investment?
We will continue to look at that investment, yes, sir. Yes, in some point in time where we have to, yes, we'll have to replace them. It competes with all the other things that are on that list.
Is Media Services big enough for us to meet down there, so you don't have to move it?
No, ma'am.
I have a question. Brian, page five, Dean Baz, the Board Portal. I see that we looked at Board Vantage and we got some demo accounts and so forth, so Baz, could you update us, and then, of course, the last sentence is waiting on further instructions on how to move forward. So I think Board, that's squarely in our bailiwick, but Baz, could you come and, I know you have to come to the microphone, but maybe you could tell us about the demo?
Good morning, first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, since we had our meeting on December seventeenth, and we looked at three different products, Board Vantage seemed to be the one that we are really keen to explore further. So since then, I contacted the company and was able to set up three accounts, demo accounts, actually four accounts, two of them as an administrator, so that would be something Peggy would have, I would have in terms of managing documents, creating folder structures, and also two accounts for the Board of Trustees. And I'm ready to set those up on iPads and have a representative from a company, from the company that distribute that solution, get on a WebEx demonstration call and show us more how it will work using these accounts that are set up for us. If you have an iPad currently, I can actually configure it to access that, where you can see the calendar, where you can set up the, where you can upload documents, download documents, and I think now we are sitting at a position where we need to make a decision whether to go forward fully with the purchase of that product and also the purchase of iPads or?
Not.
Not.
Okay, so do you need a couple of us to demo that?
My preference would be to get the board again and have the representative from the company do the demo, because I did the demo. I don't work for that company, so I did it and demonstrated what I liked, the features that I liked the most about that product. I think it'd probably be more effective when we have a specialist whose job is to demo this product, sell it, and we can ask them the questions that we have for them, and they also will have it tailored for two types of users, one for Peggy and myself, where we look at folder structures, and one for you as a Board of Trustee, and then we'll go from there. So my recommendation would be to have another meeting where I have the representative from Board Vantage, get on the phone with us, log in remotely to the computer, and then demonstrate the iPad use using these accounts that they created for us, and also demonstrate it without iPads, so we don't really have to have iPads at that point, but they will be able to demonstrate it using the desktop computers. So anybody with a normal computer, whether it is a PC or a Mac at home or in the office, will be able to log in, download documents, annotate it, and set up for the next meeting.
Okay, is this something we can do at the February fifth retreat in addition to what we already have scheduled, or do we need a separate?
I don't think it'll take, Baz, it sounded like it would take a while, I'm not sure how we can piggyback that on the February five meeting, I don't think that'll last long.
I am okay, I think I'm fine to do it before then, if that's what you're asking me.
No, it would take an hour at least, wouldn't it?
Yeah, probably take an hour.
Time involved, yeah.
Yeah, it will take an hour, so perhaps it's better to go before February meeting.
My question was whether Board members could meet at four o'clock rather than five o'clock during the training, that's be the issue.
Board members, need to hear from you. You wanna schedule another hour on the fifth, or you want a separate?
What is February?
Meeting. It's retreat.
Tuesday.
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 How about four o'clock on the fifth?
I can do it.
Four o'clock on the fifth? J.D., is that pinch you too much?
On a Tuesday, I could probably do that.
We'll have to let you know to make sure that Board Vantage will have someone on that day, but we'll plan on it right now, and I'll let you know as soon as we get a confirmation from that they can be ready to demo that day. Their salesman, they'll be ready to go.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Before we confirm it, let's make sure that they can join us.
So February fifth at four o'clock?
Are you, Wendell's still kinda looking here, are you?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay, so that would be our preference, and then if for some reason they're unavailable, we'll work through Peggy to get a separate date and time to do it, then, is that, everybody on the same page?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Baz, thank you very much. Brian, that's the only question I had. Any other questions for Vice President Bodie?
Ask for approval of my report.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the report, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Finance.
Ask for your approval under eleven A of the payment of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, are there questions? Comment, J.D. on the committee?
We reviewed the bill's order.
Yeah, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Eleven B, ask for your approval of the financial reports.
Finance Committee did review, just for your information, we should be at about halfway point of the budget, we are at fifty-three percent, so again, we are grateful to the Dean, being very watchful of the money, your expenditures. Again, institutional support, bill timing, as we have been experiencing, probably will continue to experience as our project manager, you know, is being very watchful that everything is done according to plans before paying the obligations, so there's going to be some issue there, but as you would note on page one of the cumulative expenditures, we did kind of, in our monthly expenditures, get, you know, back in sync, it was kind of a, because of a shorter month, we don't have as many expenditures, so we are on target there, and our electrical use, we continue to be conserving energy. Just want to note, out of the approximate seventeen months that we had had the Rook insulation and that, there have only been four of those months where we have had additional electrical use than in the previous years, and so I think that's a very good record and shows that there was some wise investment there, there's practically already, the upfront or short-term costs, we're already seeing benefit and paying for that investment already in savings.
Most kilowatt use hours in eleven years. That's commendable, that's really, really commendable.
So that is the summation of the report, and I would ask approval.
Second.
I ask, if Brian could talk a little about number four, not taking the lowest bid.
We're doing the financial.
I thought he asked for, okay.
We're on eleven, we're on eleven B right now. We have a motion in a second for the financial report, any other comment or question?
I was at the Board of Public until this meeting the other day, and two groups got checks back. I don't know what, how much they were, because they didn't say that, but have we ever received anything back?
No, ma'am, not that I know of.
I'm gonna try to find out.
How they got it when we didn't?
Yeah.
I know you will, Mary Ann, I know you will. All right. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask for your approval of recommendations, eleven C, one through five, and on C, number We got four bids for this big machine, that's a laser-cutting, computerized laser-cutting machine for part of the T4E grant. As the faculty member looked at him and went through all of the bells, the whistles, and the extra things that came along with that, the bid from Amada became the best of the bids. They're going to, they've dropped their, they give us a hundred ninety-five thousand dollar educational discount to start with, so truly, it's about a seven hundred thousand dollar machine. They're throwing in another machine along with it, a type of break, they're going to provide additional training, that's on top of what we asked for. They wanted our business, they needed to sell this machine, it was fifteen hundred dollars higher than, but that was deemed to be fairly insignificant on a five hundred thousand dollar machine, and most importantly, the faculty member who is in charge of this program looked at all of these machines and said, "The one that's best for us, best for our future, best for our students, that we can, and I hate to use the term, we can hang more things on this and do more in the future with it, is this machine." And so that's why that bid was selected, the best bid. Thank you.
Can I add something to that as well?
Sure.
In our grant proposal, when we submitted the budget, we included around half a million dollars specifically for this machine, and I've already talked to the FTO about this, and there are just certain forms that we have to fill out, including a letter from Dr. Givens, and I will PDF that to him, get his authorization to purchase it, but they're well aware and it was part of the grant, so.
Thank you.
Move approval of recommendations, one through five.
Okay, any further question or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Bodie. Committee reports.
Just say quickly about the meeting that Dr. Givens alluded to earlier, between the Foundation, the Board of Trustees, Kathy and I both attended that, really good conversation, talking about ways to just promote the college and also some, perhaps some significant fundraising opportunities that we might look at. No final plans were made, just a lot of good conversation, we're meeting again with Dr. Givens, I think, end of next week, Thursday or Friday, and we may be coming back to the Board with some specific recommendations in the near future. Kathy, anything yet? You want to add?
The only thing I would add is the support for including the Advancement Council, where it's appropriate and fits with what they have determined their role to be, so as we move forward, we'll be moving forward with them as well.
And pleased to see in the personnel report, hiring of Jim Beechwood as the Director of the College Relations, we think that's an important position, we're happy to see that position get filled.
Get filled.
Yeah. And congratulations to Jim for that.
I just mentioned from KACC, I attended the quarterly meeting in Colby, there's much continued discussion on how KACC continues to move forward, working with the Board of Regents on some key issues there, also preparing a legislative agenda. Legislature convened yesterday in Topeka, and our new lobbyist firm that was hired last summer is doing an outstanding job for us, Tavine and Donnelly. They put a lot of work in, there have been a lot of strategy sessions and meetings, and they are very diligent in working with the legislators. The issue, of course, is there are a whole bunch of new legislators this year, and so there have to be new relationships developed. We have to vet out and sort of see what everyone's orientation is and, you know, where they're gonna be, and as all of you that are aware and are paying attention to the news, we're not really sure what's gonna happen, so we know there's revenue shortfall, we know there's a court decision hanging out there right now saying you must fund K-12 at this 2007 level, and so we will all watch very closely. As stated earlier, Mary Ann and I, I will be going to Washington, D.C. for the AACT legislative summit, the KACC reception time will occur Tuesday evening of that week, I believe the twelfth, it's the week of the tenth that we'll be there in the evening, and so we have that information set, and Mary Ann and I will be visiting with our legislators as well as other legislators from the Kansas delegation, and usually we always see some of Mary Ann's friends from the Missouri delegation as well, and maybe even from Georgia, I don't know, she's dragged me all over those office buildings, and I've met lots of people, so we'll work them what we.
She's been with us before, so we'll work them.
We'll work them, so anyway, that's our report for KACC.
Well, they have forty-nine new legislators in the Speaker, in the House, they got forty-nine new ones.
Yeah, there's just under over fifty between both chambers, I think, so. Okay, all right. Miscellaneous, looks like we need an executive session, so we need a motion, and how long will we need, Darrell?
Ten minutes, Mr. Chairman, maybe fifteen, with no action to follow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to tell you that this is anyway, the line is set up, I'm sure, I do have the question in that time, so I just wanted to add your.
Thank you.
So we can do it today?
Okay, need a motion?
Move executive session, fifteen minutes to discuss unelected personnel matters and to protect confidentiality of persons involved. Now, this has an action to follow, is it saying no action?
No action to follow, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Eos.
Okay, no action to follow.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take a few minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm correct that there may be action to follow?
So now we need to amend our motion. Amended.
Friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, with action to follow.
The second's still good?
Second's still good.
All right, on the friendly amended motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll be back. Okay, we're back into regular session and back on the record. Unfinished business. Somebody has a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept a proposal from the Association of Community College Trustees to assist in the church, the search for the Vice President for Academic Affairs.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
Not to exceed $30,000.
Okay, that's the part I was waiting on.
That is second.
And you're good with that second? Okay. Any question or comment, Board members?
No questions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is so ordered, we will contract with ACCT for the Vice President of Academic Affairs search. Somewhat regretfully, but...
Stop that.
We can rescind previous actions. There's a clause that says if she changes her mind... Is that not true?
That's right.
That's right.
Okay, I'm fresh out of agenda items.
Move for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. How are we gonna process, we had a presentation this morning, and from the retired officer?
Yes.
I'd like to know what we're gonna do about that, are we gonna process that at all? Does it go back to the staff and staff make recommendations?
Trustee Maddox, I would remind, that's why I asked my question about the campus police, because the actions that we took was to increase the campus police force to accommodate the additional properties that the department is in charge of securing. And so that was the act, the action that this body took in the concerns that were expressed. Now, of course, if there wants to be other actions, I guess that would be up to the Chair to lead, but I just wanted, that's why I asked that question, because I knew that those were some new positions for the various reasons that were expressed by the retired officer.
There were a couple of other items that he brought up there that, you know, maybe I think we should look into, and, you know, maybe we, I'm gonna leave it open for comments before I just, you know, say anything other than that, but JD's point is well taken there. We have taken steps, and as a Board, we knew or were aware that we were planning for, when we approved our budget, we were planning for these additional campus officer positions because of the added workload. I'm sure it would have been great if we could have got them sooner, you know, than we got them, or than we're getting them, but we didn't, but nevertheless, we were aware that was planned. But there were a couple of other comments made that, you know, caused me some pause anyway, and I'd like to know what other Board members think about it.
I think we may need to, just in light of a couple of the comments, may need to address or investigate a little further, because the hiring of two additional officers does obviously make a difference. But the issue of additional compensation for short-term expansion of duties, I think maybe, maybe we just need to have an...
Short-term or permanent expansion.
An answer to that, because I think that could continue to be an issue, just so we resolve that. I mean, that's, that's my only comment.
When we do make, we need to have what we spend on additional police officers for special events, so we have something to compare it to.
Other comments?
We need to do something.
Would we like to have Vice President Bodie vet the matter out further and bring us some information?
Sure will.
It'd be interesting to know how our salaries compare to some of the other...
That was a question that I had.
Some of the colleges and some of the security forces that are around, see if we're in the ballpark of that.
Yeah, I think, I think that would certainly be appropriate, is that we did some surveying and some comparison, you know, look at that. Additional duties and responsibilities, we've asked of the administrative assistant, office assistant, whatever the proper classification is, looking there. You know, I think we have record of what the significant points were, and Brian will address it.
Also, the car issue of Greg having a car to take home, I don't know what standard around that, Don, the police, is that standard for a chief to have?
It's pretty standard, yes. If they have 24/7 response requirement, yes. It's pretty standard.
Has he ever requested it, to take one of the cars home?
Yes, he has, many times. Greg has brought that to my attention, but almost all these have been brought to our attention prior to...
Previously.
I will spit out the rest.
All we wanna do is make it right. Let's do it, make it right.
You know, I certainly don't wanna take this out of staff's hands, so...
Right.
The comment, I was disturbed with the comment about how feeling that campus officers are necessarily evil or something, that doesn't reflect this Board's thinking at all. This Board, I think, consistently has commented about how important that campus officers are to the operation of this campus and the safety of our constituents in coming here, so I certainly wouldn't want people to leave with them thinking that we don't appreciate the campus officers, or they're a vital part of what we do.
No, and the Board has publicly, in previous meetings, expressed our deep gratitude and recognition of all that they do, in light of all of the comments from how staff and students say how safe they feel here. And it's obvious by the annual report that Greg presented a few months ago that, knock on wood, we just don't have to deal with the incidents in this campus and in our facilities as many of the other colleges do. And so that is obviously a result of the very proactive service that they provide. So I think the Board has been on record, you know, we are appreciative. We'll look at the other detail, and once again, as Wendell said, we don't take this out of staff's hands, but we'll give it some due diligence, we'll look at it, and we'll, as Clyde says, we'll make things right as right ought to be. Everybody good?
Good.
Okay. Now I'm ready.
Ready for promotion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, all right. Thank you all for being here.